Okay.
Like to call to order this Tuesday, August 6th, work session to order. If I could get a roll call, please.
Mr. East, Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Dawson.
Here.
Mr. Ratliff.
Here.
Mr. Quantz.
Mr. Reese.
Mayor Collins.
Here. Alright, so our first thing on the agenda is case number 2024-ZA-03, amendments to the town of Pulaski zoning ordinance as it relates to manufactured and modular housing. Summer, if you would like to approach.
So, as was presented to you all a few months ago, we have been looking at expanding options for housing within the town, particularly to help with affordability and other considerations. And in that, we've, we identified that modular housing was only allowed, is, the definition itself is archaic, doesn't comply with current building codes, and it is extremely limited to particular areas of town and does not address the fact that modular housing technology has evolved over time. And because of that, a lot of the concerns that were being addressed in that, in our zoning are not really concerns anymore in terms of how safety, in terms of land property value decrease and things like that. And so, we are, we are also proposing to update the definition so that it brings it in line more accurately with the state building code. That also gives us a level of protection because we can go look, it's, this is what the state says. And in terms of, of legal questions. And then we also want to apply a residential, a residential industrial building definition, which basically enables modular housing and specifies that in the code. We've been, policy-wise for the town, we have been enabling modular housing as an acceptable building method. This just codifies it. In that, we are adding manufactured dwellings to sections 4.3, .2-2, that is the special exception section of R2, which is our duplex areas of town. There are a number of them up sort of the, I guess that's the west side of Randolph, and then there's some out towards the, out towards James Hardy in that area as well, where we do have a very successful modular housing subdivision already in place in town. And then we are plan, we are proposing to also make R3 buy right as a housing option for manufactured housing. We did take the suggestion that was made by the council to commission in terms of possibly making that one a special exception as well. The reasons for it being a buy right is that even though $650 for an application fee is not perhaps cost prohibitive if you're putting it onto a mortgage, it is sending the statement that we are not in fact, you know, for the, for the political and the, the image aspect of it, that we're not actually really like onboard with helping people afford housing as easily as possible. So this would be, this would be, so on, on the map, this would be your kind of bright goldeny-yellow areas. I'm sorry, no, it's the more apricot colored areas, and these are, tend to be your lower income smaller lots. So they're going to be the cheaper land in town anyways.
Can we, can we get up here too, on the back?
R3 and R2 are resolved.
Wow, he's doing that. So the, the yellow is what you said was going to be special exception?
Yeah, that bright, that bright golden rotty-yellow is going to be the special exception. Those are Bs. And then the one that's a more of a, like a peach is, or sand is going to be your, are going to be your buy rights, which you'll notice it's a good bit of south side. R3, yeah. Good bit of south side, and then over like where McGill, what's that, Fox, Foxridge? The, the apartment duplexy. Fox Run is located, as well as other kind of smaller lots in town. There are a number of houses that are in those areas already that are manufactured. Not sure how they got there, but they're there. Additionally, we have, we are try, in that, we're also putting building specifications so that we are requiring a permanent foundation if erected after the date of the applica, the ordinance. That means that you're going to need, you are going to have to follow manufacturers and structures, instructions that come with your model. There is going to be a, basically a pylon and cementing system, much like you would have footers on a stick-built structure. This is, this, this comes with a certain amount of lift protection, so if there's another tornado, you're not going to have these houses just flying up in the air. And so, as much as any other house. And so, in that, we're also looking at how they comply with the, this also allows them to get funding for loans through the state and some, some other options as well for mortgages, and also keeps neighbors safe and communities also safe. We're still requiring one structure per lot. We are requiring they meet any setbacks that are there for stick-built construction, and we're requiring that they be no minimum square footage. That means the smallest they can be is 950 square feet. All manufactured dwellings are going to be required to be registered with the county as real property. That means they're taxable, like a stick-built house, and that they are going to require that they get a certificate of occupancy as well, like you would need for a stick-built houses. And in that, we're also doing some changing in terms of our single-family, our two-family, and our multi-family definitions. And that just excludes, that is, currently, it reads that it excludes mobile housing and manufactured housing as defined in this ordinance, and we're just taking that out so that a single-family house can be a manufactured house, or duplex can be a manufactured dwelling under our ordinances. We're not specifically stating it, but we're not specifically prohibiting it either. And then we are also, because we're changing the name from mobile slash manufactured housing to manufactured dwelling, we're just going to clean up the, the language so that everything matches in the zoning ordinances.
Does council have any questions?
Actually got a question for you, but maybe a silly question, maybe a question.
It's okay.
When you say manufacturer home, and we're speaking double wides, it's basically not single wides, because single wides can also be put on permanent foundations.
So it would be.
We're speaking, when you say manufactured double wides, no single wides?
It could be a single wide, providing it's at least 950 square feet. That's going to be hard to do with manufacturer specs. I think there are a few deluxe, deluxe models that exist. However, there are some single wides out there that look like they belong in Architectural Digest. They're gorgeous. I want to live in them.
Right, right.
It's just a dimensions thing. They're not built any differently. They're just a space.
Right.
And that's part of why we put that minimum space, minimum square footage stipulation in there. It's based on what I can tell from stick-built houses in the region, anything lower than about 900 square feet just sits on market, and it's hard to sell. This keeps our housing market pretty, pretty active in terms of being able to resell it.
Reason why I asked the question, want to keep the arguments down. If you have people put five or six nice modular homes, they are nice ones, brick foundation. I would have one. And then along comes somebody with a single wide wanting to prop in between them. It's going to cause harassment with you.
It's still going to have to have a single fa, it's still going to have to have a permanence foundation. They're still going to have to have some kind of, of what's called skirting, but that can be a masonry wall. That can be, and per the, per the UBC code, skirting is something that has to be like wind resistant and test up to a certain, you can't just have it, a floppy piece of cardboard be your skirting. It has to actually be attached to your home.
Yeah, I understand that. Well, I guess what I'm asking is, is there's a difference between a single wide and a mod, you know the other.
Dimensions.
I've learned it. So if you have all these nice homes, you spoke something about James Hardy across from Bainbridge subdivision.
Right.
You know, there's probably, what, half million dollar homes, two and a half million dollars, whatever.
Yeah.
I can't live out there.
Yeah.
But if, say beside it, they, they put a five or six really nice double wides, then here comes me, and I'm not making fun of anyone, because you got to live where you got to live. I, I understand that.
Right.
But if you put $200,000 in a, in that, and here comes someone with a $50,000 single wide dragging it in with a tractor.
Right.
I, for the future, for this board, is what I'm asking, because they're going to come back here.
Right.
And raise cane. That's, that's, I don't care.
So.
You got to live where you got to live. I, I understand that. I, I'm no better than nobody else.
Primarily, your million dollar homes in this town are located in R1s. You might have an exception here or there, but those large lot, Pepper's Ferry, Progress Street houses you're talking about are going to be in those large family, single, those, those R1 large lot residential, single family, and we're not currently allowing manufactured housing. Modular, you can do it. Manufactured, no. And so, we are limiting it just simply by where we're allowing it to some extent because of property, because of comparable property values. Does that mean that if you are the unicorn that's in R2 and own a million dollar home, it isn't a possibility that you get a $100,000 home next to you? Unfortunately, no, it's not, but that's the ca, but that's the case if you're a stick-built property owner too, right? And so, there's no guarantee that your person next to you isn't going to build as cheap a, as cheap a stick-built as they possibly can. That's the risk you take as a property owner to some extent.
What do you call that? The 900 square foot is categorized this way?
So the nine, it's min, it's just minimum square footage.
So, I, what, what Mr. Ratliff is talking about is going to cause a whirlwind of issues if that happens. So there's areas in town that are designated mobile home parks.
Right.
And they fit that criteria, so that's going to cause some big issues.
So those mobile home parks that you're talking about are currently non-conforming uses. We can't expand them, and unless we, unless council decides to put one in, we, we don't have an actual existing mobile home park. Yes, we've got four of them that exist, but they're all non-conforming uses. So we, you're not going, because you're limited to one unit per lot, like a, like any other stick-built house, right? The only amount, the only thing that's going to go in there is, at most, is going to be one unit. Not, you're not going to have someone opening up a park without you guys approving a park, basically, because we have two types of zones that exist for mobile home parks.
Well, I think you said it when you said it'd be hard to get a single wide per square footage of what you was talking.
It would be, yeah.
I think you covered it there. I just wanted you, for the future council to cover their back forty from, our manager town manager off from having the harassment and of people coming up complaining goes, hey, look, you know, I got a $300,000 modular, which is very nice home. I, I'd love to have one, and you know, here comes somebody from, you know, dragging one in. It shouldn't even be on the road and propping it up.
At 900 square foot?
Yeah, I, that's all.
And they're going to fit.
Yeah, and, and.
That ain't going to work.
Yeah, that's not going to work.
Right.
Sorry I'm coming in late to this, but a 15 by 60 is a single wide trailer. That's 900 square feet. I think that, that's an issue, and it's not going to fly.
Well, I guess that was kind of my, my question really was, you know, and I completely understand the planning commission's thoughts with the $650 special exception, you know, cost, you know, not wanting, you know, looking like, you know, we're making it more different. Because there's point, there are tons of places where, where modular homes, or double wide, or whatever you want to call it, manufactured home, there's a ton of places all over, you know, some of those colored areas that would be greatly improved by that. So I, I'm all for us getting this done, but my question really is almost, you know, kind of more on Todd's side a little bit, is, is allowing it to be a buy right use of R3, the, the peach color, is that going to cause us an unnecessary problem by allowing it to be buy right?
Yeah, you know, absolutely. In my opinion, it absolutely will, and I don't mind being blunt. I work for y'all. Y'all work for the public, but there's an area for, for trailers, alright? There's an area for trailers, and as she said, they're probably non-conforming right now. Don't mean you can't conform them. So, a, a lot of localities will say, okay, if you pull it out, you can't put any more back, or you've got to modernize it. But I'm telling you verbatim, if you allow that 900 square foot trailer to be pulled in there in an area that's zoned for stick building or modern modular homes?
Well, and so, for an example, and it's, it's really hard for me to look at this, this way, but I, I'm almost certain that Collins Drive, and you know, beside Hopkins Drive, is, is, is part of our, of this R3 section. And Collins Drive, and this, I'm just using that as an example, because the point is, is that each one of these streets has its own feel and a reason that people bought there and lived there, you know, and they have their own kind of feel. And that, and Collins Drive is filled with, you know, with homes that, you know, I don't know that it would be appropriate in that neighborhood even to have a double wide sitting in there. You know, and again, that's not saying anything about it. It would just affect the character of that street. And that's just one isolated street, but it is part of something that we basically would be giving a buy right use and saying, if you buy a property here, that's what you can do with it, and we can't say anything about it. And, and so, I agree 100% with what you, with what you and I guess planning commission agreed with, the $650, but I would be more willing for us to pass something that allowed, allowed us to waive that fee if it was approved or something. I don't know how you appropriately do that. I mean, and maybe we don't even, maybe we don't worry about it as much. But, but to lose, to lose the ability to pass that judgment in, in each case, you know, to say, is this right for that location? You know, we, I think we need to get it done. We need to get this out there so, you know, so, so people can take advantage of fixing some lots with some, with some improvements by putting in some manufactured homes that would really improve the look of the town. But, but we need to do it in a way that we don't lose judgment and can, you know, over each individual situation. And that was my concern, and I, do I think that should cost somebody $650 extra? Absolutely not. I don't think it should. But if it has to, and that's the only way that we can maintain control, then it's, it is what it is, in, in my opinion. I mean, I, I'd love to see that somehow not make someone putting in a nice home in a place that's going to improve the town. I don't want to see that cost more money, you know, to do that. But, but we, we need to maintain control because that, that street is just one example of where, and it may, in 20 years, it may never happen. You know, I mean, there's houses on all those lots already, and so the chance that somebody is going to tear one down and put a, you know, and, and put a, a single wide on it is, wouldn't even make sense, you know. But, yeah, we are basically saying that they could, you know.
I think, I think you absolutely need to just tighten, tighten that down as much as you can. Single wides, obviously, in, in most stick-built neighborhoods are entirely out of the question. It, it, it goes to the character of the neighborhood, and I think you mentioned that. If, and, and there's a very big difference between a manufactured home and a modular home. Modular homes are stick-built. In a lot of cases, they exceed code. They're just built off-site and brought in. When you set them up, look completely like a, a stick-built home, and essentially are, same foundation, everything. So, yeah, I, I would have a hard time moving forward with anything that allows 900 square foot in, in just random neighborhoods, a 900 square foot home, because that, that is a single wide.
So the maximum, the minimum is 950, just point of clarification. And then the other, the other piece of this is that any manufactured home, be it single wide, double wide, has to go through a HUD certification process. We are not allowing them to be in town if they have not been HUD certified and that documentation is not available. So we're not moving in the rattle-trapple shastas from the 1950s, right? That's not, that's not what we're, that's, that piece of it is taken care of.
15 by 60 is 900 square foot. It's not unreasonable, and they, I'm sure they have them out there. A 16, you had one foot of width, and you're there, so it, it's still a single wide. I mean, we can, we can, you know, paint it however we like, but it, it's a single wide. So, that's a single wide.
You cannot. I'm encouraging you. Do not let that happen.
Agreed.
I'm encouraging you to not let that hap, we can talk about it all, but that's going to start a whirlwind.
Let me ask you this, a follow-up question, you know, to Mr. Day, is having it only by special exception, does that give us enough control to prevent it from being?
I think, I think you do, I, I would recommend that we, that we take our time and look at it. I would almost be as, as bold as, as to say, let's look at what our other political jurisdictions are doing, and I can pretty much bet you that they have alleviated them, unless it's in a designated park.
You're talking specifically about the single wide square footage?
Absolutely, yes.
So you're, you're comfortable with it?
No.
No, no, no.
Now, so let me fi, follow up to that then. Let's say you changed the square footage. Let's say whatever that number is. What, you know, what is it, 1100, is it 1200 square foot? Let's just say you changed the square footage. At that point in time, if you, if you raised your bottom and changed the square footage, do you still leave it as a special exception?
No. And again, I, you know, I'll take responsibility for this being where it's at. My participation with the planning commission and several other committees has been nonexistent. It's going to change. But, the, you can put as much lipstick on that as you want to. And as Summer said, that HUD certification, that DOT certification, all of that dictate a level of commitment to construction or modeling. So, yeah, I mean, next year, they'll come out with a 1200 square foot one. It still sets a criteria. It still comes in on wheels, and they remove those axles, and it still sets a precedent. So, there are, in every community, we all exist in a level of society that we choose to live in, or we want to live in. You can categorize that ever how you want to, but introducing that type of homes into a modern community that's been stick-built is going to cause a tidal wave through this locale, through this municipality.
I agree.
It's, there's no question about it. That's not a if. It will. So, it, it, you can say that's a stigma, that's a stereotype. I will be more than happy to put that bullseye on my chest, and you can use that as a target. It is what it is. But, I'll assure you, regardless of zoning, if you were to take and, and, and recommend the potential existence of that on Red Fox, it's going to be some community out for, and it, and it's legitimate. So, they pay, they pay an extra dollar. They pay an, an extra expense for a, for a, a cosmetic. And again, you can stereotype it any way you want to, but they, they pay for a, a, a level of luxury, if you, if you want to say. And it's going to create some problems.
Summer, do you, do you have an idea already if, I mean, there, obviously, we, we have, we have double wides in the town already. You alluded to that. There are locations where, where they exist.
Yeah.
That they are the better-looking house on the street.
Yep.
You know, and again, I mean, you know, with, with all due respect, there are places where we would, we absolutely, and I completely understand everything you're saying, there are places and streets where we would be improving the housing stock.
Yep. And I, I want to, I want to add to this. I asked Summer about a piece of raw land I was going to buy if I could put a double wide there. I specifically asked her. Matter of fact, it's in the same area in which I'm buying a house. And she in fact, they said no. So, and I understand it. I totally get it, but I had to take a shot at it. I didn't argue with her on it. I get it. I understand it. I wasn't, uh.
I, I don't think, it's, it's going to be very difficult to just do a broad sweep. Special exceptions, in my mind, are, are for very specific, when you, a special exception is where flexibility, and, and if, if in fact, you do issue that special exception, it, it's not going to change the community, the, it, it's, there's some precedence there, right? Maybe you're just trying to limit a certain activity. But when you, when you go into a neighborhood that is all stick-built, especially, the special exception shouldn't even be on the board. It shouldn't even be an option, because it is what it is, because you want to maintain the integrity of that neighborhood. And, and I've seen other communities, I, I won't name them, but there's, there's some communities have some of the, the, the best old housing stock around, next to us, of course. And, and some of the nicest communities, or nicest neighborhoods, and they allowed them to, to be infiltrated with all kinds of different variants, multi-family, this, and it completely undermined the integrity of that neighborhood and what it was. We've been somewhat successful at preventing that in our, in our, our more, our nicer neighborhoods. But, but the, the fact of the matter is, I don't think we can just do a broad sweep. But I, I completely agree with Mr. Ratliff and Todd, that it, just to, to allow that, even under special exception, I think is, is just, you're, you're opening a can of worms that, that we don't want to open. Because ultimately, we want to attract more people to our neighbors, our neighborhoods, and, and let them choose the neighborhood they want to live in, and, and, and we want those folks that, that are going to invest and, and build a home and, and do that sort of thing. We want to make sure that those places are protected.
Everybody has a choice.
That's right.
Everybody has a choice of the quality of life in which you choose to participate in. And if you, if you are, are blessed and, and you can, you can live in that, in that neighborhood that it's got the more elaborate homes, then your rights should be protected in that neighborhood that a, that a lesser home, not to say that they're any better, but a lesser home won't infiltrate that community. And I know I'm going to get punched in the nose on Facebook for everything I'm saying, but it is what it is. So, as I stated, I actually looked at double wides here in Pulaski when I was looking. So, I've lived in a single wide, by the way. I've spent many years in one. I don't have a problem with them, but I understand that you have to respect people's rights and people's decisions to live a certain quality of life.
And it's, it's been my experience that most communities, you had mentioned of what other communities are doing. It's been my experience that, and, and I actually purchased a property with a house and a, and a mobile home on it. The rule was, you move, move, move the mobile home out, which I did, you can't put it back. And so, there, there's a reason for that, and it's, it, I, I just think it's the, the smart thing to do is to just restrict those type of, of homes to certain areas, very, very specific areas.
And I agree with Dawson. Some of the nicest communities and neighborhoods that I've went through were all double wide.
Oh, which, which is, exactly.
Very, very nice, well-kept homes.
Well, not, and so, this just draws, draws to question, and, and we run into this a lot of times, it seems, and when we run, when we're talking about our zoning and we're, and we're, as Mr. Reese said, kind of making a, a broad change across zoning is, I, I get the perception that our zoning itself is so broad.
It is.
That, because if, let's just rewind this whole conversation, and let's say we were talking about a specific street, and, and, and we all knew that. And, and, and we all knew that that street would be a great place, you know, you know, that if that street was changing, if the, you know, houses were tore down or people bought them and replaced them with, with, uh, you know, a square footage of a double wide, you know, or, you know, and they were placed on that street, that I, that I feel like that it wouldn't even be a conversation. Say if this is isolated to that street and this, and this, this is, we want to open up the opportunity to improve this street and this makes sense here, then, then I, I feel like that, that it would be difficult for that to not sound like a good idea. I could be wrong about that, but I feel like it would be difficult for it to not sound like a good idea, right? And so, you know, and, and saying no, we're saying no to what we don't want, but we're also not allowing, you know, places and areas that might be. And, and so, the, is the issue not in our zoning? And, and the fact that our, that our areas are so broad that we're touching a street like Collins Drive at the same time that we're touching a street that, you know, is in desperate need, you know, of, of that opportunity? You know, and, and I don't know, what, maybe that's the way all communities are, you know? I, I can't speak to the zoning of other communities, but, uh, do, do you think, Mr. Day, that the, you know, that, is that, is that impossible for us to get into those weeds or, you know?
It's absolutely not, not impossible to get into them, but a, a level of understanding of operation across the locality, especially the governmental end of it, planning commission, town council, IDA, everybody that's involved with decision-making needs to come to a collective direction. And, uh, I'm, I'm telling you, a majority of localities have eliminated, eliminated them, uh, unless they are in existence. And, um, and there's, there's, there's some nice, nice areas. So I just think that, um, uh, I, I don't, when I say I think, it absolutely does not apply to the outcry that you'll get if, if that single wide that's twelve hundred square foot or nine hundred and fifty square foot is moved into a neighborhood that's stick-built, that's some of our better elaborate neighborhoods, you're gonna get, you're, you're gonna get a beating. I mean, it is what it is. So I, I just think some, uh, some communication on my end, I'll take, I'll take the hit for this. I mean, I, I, and it'll change and I just think it's, it comes down to an understanding of where we see ourselves at tomorrow and, um, our six-year, our six-year BOD plan and, and our comprehensive plan and it needs to all be reflective. It just unfortunately takes, takes time to get there and I'm not helping it much, hour and a half away, so I try to... But that's changing, that's not gonna be an excuse forever.
Congratulations. I do, you know, I'll just say this and then I won't say anything else. So, since I've been on council, zoning is one, one of, I'll be honest, my least favorite subjects. But it's also probably one of the most important, next to the budget, you obviously know that. I would rather slow walk this until we understand it to the nth degree before making any move forward.
Would it help, I, so Grandy Grumbine, who is a representative of Virginia Manufactured Housing and Modular Association, he works primarily as a lobbyist for legisla- the legislature to reform things like the building code and also to work with entities like insurance companies and...
You lost me at lobbyist, so I'm...
They are, they're, uh, they're, they're an entity that promotes manufactured housing, but in that they're also looking at how does the whole system fit together? So he's probably one of the foremost experts we have in the state on it.
And, but that's why he's a lobbyist, but it, he also has, has, has other goals.
He does.
And they, they, they're not necessarily the goals that this council should have, in my opinion.
Probably, but in terms of education, would it help you guys to, to hear that presentation? He goes into different options of housing, how it's, how regulations have changed in the state over the past several decades, um, how it interacts with insurance, safety concerns? Would that be something you guys are interested in?
Not I, but thank you.
I'm not, it... I'm not arguing the fact that they're not built well, that's not what I'm, I'm really saying. What I'm actually saying is if you have a nice modular community and I said I wanna drag my single wide up on my tractor tonight, what is the regulations? I, I meet your square footage now, I'm gonna meet it. But it, it looks, it's just a pile of junk, that's, that's what I'm trying to say. But you can have double wides go that too, I get that, but I'm just saying, what we wanna do is protect your and the town's back forty. That's all I, I...
So you cannot be on a property without having gone through the pylon-ing process, right? There's no, there's no pulling on a unit and parking it.
Yeah, I know that.
There's the, so you are turning it into, granted, single wides, depending on the model, look like single wides or they can look like single wides. There are also some very nice ones that are almost entirely glass and don't look like single wides at all. Um, and so in terms of what you could get, you're, you're right, you could get a mess next to, but you could also have a mess of a stick-built. So there's no, there's, as a property owner, you, you, there's no guarantee of what your neighbor's gonna do, what their, what your neighbor has the right to do on their own property. Now, in terms of limiting that in, as far as manufactured housing, like, if, that is, of course, up to you all, but it doesn't prevent your neighbor from building a seven hundred and fifty million home.
This, when, when you, when you put these rules and regulations in, that's where you protect yourself from that.
Right, right.
Uh, and, you know, I, I just, and then once again, I'm not knocking single wides, I don't wanna be beating on town manager's doors and that and it. Uh, it's not what I'm saying. What I am saying is that, that a single wide value in a nice double wide community not only is less value there, but it could devalue the other ones around it. I mean, that's all I'm saying. If you have a nice neighborhood, just protect yourself, that's...
Can we move on to the next one and, and Todd? Todd, can you take care of, I mean, can you do some more into that one? Okay, so the next thing that we have is...
Thank you, by the way.
We're gonna move that on to another meeting anyway, right? So, um, so the next one is case number twenty twenty-four dash Z A dash zero four, removing medical office from sections four point seven point two dash one, four point six point two dash two, four point five point two dash one R O and P U D permitted and R M H dash one, special exceptions. And medical office as used for sections four point seven point two dash two, four point nine point two dash one, four point one zero point two dash two. Okay, yeah, B two, B, uh, B dash two permitted, R O and B three special exceptions. Summer, if you could explain what I just said, would be very thankful.
Sure, okay, so, uh, good zoning practice is when you've changed a definition, which you guys did four or five months ago. We look at where does it go in town and does it still make sense? Um, how that use could show up, given that times change things, right? Um, and so, we, we redefined medical office and we also, planning commission also took a critical look at where they actually show up in town and where they show up in town by right or by special exception and does that actually make sense with the scope of use you could have for a medical office? Um, and so, in that, they did a fair amount of analysis, looking at land availability, parking availability, and the scope of uses that you can have for a medical office under our definition. You could have something as broad as like the Pulaski Family Health Center, that's a large building. Or you can have something as small as Doc, the dentist, Mr., is it Hickenbottom? Down there off a main, like, right, right next to the courthouse, right? And that's a very insular, very small, single family, single entity practice, right? And so in that, we wanna be able to protect the town in getting something as huge as the, the Pulaski Medical, Family Medicine Park, and not that that wouldn't be wonderful, but going in, in our downtown, right? And so the, or, or next to residential housing and presenting potential nuisances. So what we did was we, um, did some eliminating of uses, particularly from, um, the P U D permitted, that's our planned use development, that is a, that is sort of a special conditions, almost zone that is allowed in town. Um, we're just, we're, we're setting it aside, um, from there, and then we're also getting rid of it from our, our, R M H dash one is one of our mobile home parks. Um, and I think the reason it was in there at some point was because we do allow a temporary medical, like, trailer. But the way that's regulated in our zoning is, I believe, it's either the mayor or the town manager has to approve them and it's very much sort of a, in the case of a pandemic, kinda like they set up all those, those tents in Central Park, we could pull in medical stuff somewhere in order to accommodate a crisis. And so, yes, you can put it there, but it doesn't make a whole lot of sense if you're approving where it goes when you put it into the town. And so, we're recommending removal of that. It's also a permitted or a by right use in R O. R O is our residential office zone and primarily where it shows up is sort of right above our central business district where we've got a lot of, um, like Fourth Street, I believe, and Fifth Street are R O. So you've got a lot of housing there, you've got some businesses, but you've also got a lot of people living there. And so while we don't see that as being necessarily a problem, we do wanna be able to have that conversation and be like, well, what exact, how many, how many doctors are you gonna have, what kind of clientele are you looking at? Is this gonna be something like, and is this gonna present negative externalities to the community that we may need to mitigate? Um, and so we're proposing to change that to special exception. Also, it's currently not represented in, um, B three, and so we're proposing that central, our central business district also allowed medical offices by special exception. Again, a, a practice like Dr. Hickenbottom's makes perfect sense there. Same with, with, with Villi Associates, but something larger, like a family medical practice that has multiple doctors and multiple specialties may not make so much sense down there. And then also, we are allowing it, currently it is not allowed in the B two area, that's most of East Main is B two. Um, and so that's sort of your main business district. That's where somewhere you may want a Pulaski Family Medical type of facility. It might make sense there or, or another outpatient facility that's a little larger or smaller, but that, that district is really intended for those kind of uses and right now we don't allow it. Um, and then it's also currently, um, allowed as a by right in, in, uh, B one and it would stay in B one as a by right as well. So you would be basically putting them back into all of your business districts in town, either by special exception or by right.
Excuse me, council, have any questions? Okay.
I'll just say this while I've got it on my brain, just as a, as a general. I get a little lost at, you know, reading, reading through this information when the, when the section, when basically it's directed towards section number references. It's, it's kinda, just from a standpoint of really understanding where and what's changing, you know, as just, and this is just purely informational, you know, it may not be particular to this conversation, but to be able to know that four, you know, dot one, dot two dash two is, where is that? What, like, I, I see we're removing it from that section, but that really doesn't tell me anything unless I have the whole, you know, you know, to understand that we're talking about R one here, that we're gonna, you know, or we're talking about R two. And then, and then to correlate that also with an actual zoning map, to be able to kinda know that when we're talking about removing something, that I can actually see, you know, where we're talking about removing it or where we're talking about adding it. And it just, for me personally, and I, I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but for me personally, it's, it's, I, I can read it, but I still don't exactly know everything that I'm seeing or talking about because I can't associate it with exactly each one of those line items as we're kinda saying, hey, we're adding this, we're taking this, you know, and it's, and just to be able to get maybe a clearer picture, sometimes those things may help in, in, from a packet standpoint, maybe. You know, just to, to be able to, to clearly see that as opposed to the section numbers, because it, it, I don't know, it maybe works for everybody else, but those section numbers are like a monkey to a math problem for me.
I know the section numbers are terrible and they're awful for him to read and unfortunately, if it wasn't a, that's how I have to...
I'm not trying to fuss about it, I just, I was just...
That's how I have to advertise them in the, and, and she has to put them in your ordinances. So that's why we do it, but I always try to put that, um, that parentheses there, so it's actually telling you a zone code um, that will correlate to your zoning maps, to your, your ordinances and gives you a little bit of a clearer definition of what is actually going there. And I always put those in order of whatever, whatever's changing over here, I'm explaining in those parentheses over there, because I realize I don't remember them, I have to look them up every time. The other thing that happened in the first paragraph, I tried to text, text, explain what I was doing. Granted, I can from now on add a zoning map and that is not a problem. But I, I do, I do try to help you guys there.
Trust me, you, I mean, it's, you, you done a great job with all that information. I'll just, those, those, those couple of things, you know, helped my brain and that, yeah.
No. Nothing.
No, it is not. We can definitely get you one.
Have to look it up. Yeah, I haven't done it in a long time, so I don't, I assume it's still on the web.
Yeah, it is definitely still on the website. Would you prefer a digital copy or would you like a hard copy? We can get you a hard copy.
Yeah, I'm good with your one, actually.
Well, and again, for me personally, you know, each time we're talking about making a change to that, you know, it just, I think it benefits to be able to, you know, see, see that map, so here, we're talking about this, we're, we're gonna change this right here. This is the change we're gonna make to this right here, you know, and...
Again, I think it's just, it's, it's, it's a simple area of just communication. And, uh, you know, the, the planning commission works with it on a daily basis. So a lot, a lot of that stuff, um, is taken for granted at this level. Uh, but what we, what we will change is the way we communicate. We, we will always do that to try to better it, but obviously you don't know those. I don't know them either, I don't have them in front of me either. So when the ad said thi- this is what we're doing, it is kinda convoluted. And it's our job to get the information to you guys in a format during a work session with handouts around a rectangle table maybe and communicate that information. So we'll work to perfect that. And, uh, I know it seems to be the, the broken record recording, but I promise it'll become a reality in time, so...
And I, I just wanted, with, I, I say all that with great appreciation to all the work that's going in, you know, to things that are obviously on the plate for a reason, you know, to, to, to make, to make needed adjustments, you know, and wo- work, work our way through those.
Summer, are any of these public, I know there was a, there was a public hearing or maybe a decision that council had to make or something, or any of these?
These go to public hearing if they're ready to.
Okay, so are any of them pressing because of any client that you, you're working with?
These are not.
Okay, all right, so we'll just, we'll just bring them back to you. I don't need you to vote to go to a hearing at this time yet. We'll continue to work, uh, to try to clarify some of, some of those questions and, uh, we'll get back to you.
Really appreciate your work.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Summer, you have an unenviable job.
All right, so, um, with that, that's all I have on this agenda, so I'll just declare this one, um, finished.